Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and hit the hammer here and call this meeting to order. This is the June 15, 2020 Reed Field Select Board Meeting. And so we'll start with the minutes of May 11 and 28, which are in your packet, I believe.
Do you want to do them together?
Yeah, the 28th is an executive session. And there was just a note that we went in and out of executive session.
What's going on here?
So.
It just dropped out.
We can hear you, Ralph.
I'm not sure that makes a difference, but it's frozen for a long time here.
We can hear you fine.
Oh, boy.
He's not hearing us.
No, I don't think so.
All right, I'm unmuted.
Okay, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
You might be better.
I think, I think we'll proceed and, and hope that Ralph joins us in process here. Thank you. We have other people joining us. We're having an issue connecting with one select board member, but we're going to proceed with the meeting. So on the, on the table at this point for the minutes.
I would make a motion that we accept the minutes of May 11th and May 28, 2020, as presented.
May I have a second? It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes of May 11 and 28, 2020. I will call LaRoe, Woodson.
Yes.
Sammons.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Eno, are you available to vote? Not yet. We're going as a yes. We'll proceed with warrants 49 to 52. Chris, you did the warrants, is that correct?
Yeah, I did the warrant.
Okay.
Do you want, where we don't have to go through, do you want me to break them out? Or you just want me to highlight the things in certain warrants?
You can go ahead and highlight and then roll that into a motion if you want to.
Okay.
Or I can do the motion.
We had the school pay, in, in 51, we had the school payment, 309,199. And First Park, the 12,000, 3807.
Killing me.
And. That's about the highlights. Forty. Forty-nine was nothing unusual. It was the insurances. Looks like we spent some money on posted, which is all the things we mailed out for the budget. But there's, that's, there's no biggies there. So we have warrant 49 and 50. Payroll is 14,529.59. Accounts payable is 23,908.20, which gives 38,437.79.
I'm done.
So I make a motion, we accept 49 and 50 for 38,437.79.
I'll second that. And Ralph, we can hear you.
What I'll do is I'll ask Bill to just mute Ralph and then try to bring him back in by telephone if he can. Maybe Eric, you can help with that, I'm not sure. But if we can bring him back in by telephone, that would be great. If not, while he's having the difficulty, it's probably not, it's more confusing if we hear him. So we'll proceed then with, I'm sorry for the distraction. It's in the amount of $38,437.79. Warrants 49 and 50 have been presented, moved and seconded, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Any discussion on the, on the motion? Seeing none, Woodson?
Yes.
Uh, Sammons?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Member going as a yes. If we'll proceed then to the next warrant, which is the larger one.
Yeah, it's 51 and 52. Accounts payroll is 356,431.21, which is the, the school is in there. And the payroll is 15,382. So we come up with.
Sorry, Chris, that was, that was the state fees, the payroll was 40,863.36.
Oh, I'm looking at the over thing here and it says payroll is 15,003.
That was a state fee, that was 51B, 51A was 561. I'm in the packet.
Oh, payroll is 40,863.36?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then this is wrong, Eric, this, the paper that we signed. So it's 356,431.21 for the accounts payables. State fees, 561 and 15,382. Payroll is 40,863.36 for a total warrant of 397,294.57. I move that we accept this warrant.
I'll second that and ask that, that Eric make a new sheet for us to sign for tomorrow.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, because even the total's incorrect on that. It says 38,000. So that must be a transposition from the previous it is. Okay, so I've got the numbers. It was moved and seconded to accept warrants 51 and 52 in the total of 397,294.57. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, so just to make sure, we're clear of what we are approving on the warrant? It seemed a little confusing.
I'm clear.
Okay, all right, great, fantastic. I say yes then.
Okay, so we'll move, Woodson?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Mr. Price, you've submitted your vote, correct?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Eno? Um, and Mr. going as a yes.
I realize my internet connection is unstable.
So quite interesting to have that second conversation going. We'll move on to town, to select board communication. So are there any members of the select board that would like to say anything?
I have something. I really wanted to hear from Ralph on a update on the library and the, the library and the fire station, so I'll hope that maybe Eric can do that or Ralph will join us. But they were putting the metal roof on the front part of it this morning, and that looks really great.
Yeah, we have it as a under old business for a project update, so at that point, we'll ask, hopefully we have been back on at that time. Yes, Dennis?
Uh, I just want to say to everyone here and for posterity that I really appreciate all of the participation during the Reed Field Cleanup May. Uh, I got a lot of feedback, I got a lot of interesting messages, I got some pictures, things like that for cleaning up the streets of Reed Field, the roads and things like that. It, it meant a lot to me to help out and sort of, you know, Catherine with your help and just sort of keeping up the, what John has created. I just want to remind everyone that it's always Cleanup Reed Field Day. And certainly I know that the, there's a lot of great people who are around. I, one of the things that I heard the most during the cleanup time was, "We already do this." Or, "I just do my road anyway." And it, and it just goes to sort of reinforce the stewardship of the outdoors that I think a lot of Reed Field citizens understand and subscribe to. So I just wanted to say that. I wanted to say, in second, congratulations to the Morana Cook School class of 2020. I know that there was an incredible, incredible undertaking to get this graduation figured out and, and, and safe and all of those things. So I, on behalf of me, and I know that, that, you know, it's the Reed Field folks and the future of Reed Field residents there. But we, I just want to say that to all the folks and all the teachers, especially all the educators. And last but not least, I just want to remind everyone that voting is at the Reed Field Elementary School. Not for nothing, but just remember that voting is at the Reed Field Elementary School.
Thank you. Anyone else? I, I would just second what Dennis said about congratulations to the class that was graduating from Morana Cook High School. And also really everybody who finished a very difficult and challenging year from, from, from the very small kids at elementary school all the way through. The, I don't, we don't actually operate on the chat on, while we're speaking. I just noticed something pop up on the chat. I also wanted to just remind everybody that the annual budget meeting is June 17, 2020, and that is Wednesday night. If you go to the Morana Cook Area School RSU 38 website, there are a number of provisions in there for attending that public meeting that deals with social distancing, being masked. That mask will be available when you get there, if you don't have one. And there'll be a remote location set up as well if there's an overflow. So do think about attending that meeting.
Freaking crazy. Freaking thing doesn't work.
Okay, we're gonna need to mute that again. So we'll move on to, we'll move on to town staff reports. Eric, the floor is yours for your report and the treasurer's report, please.
Sure, all right, thank you very much. And we tried to sort out the issues with Ralph's laptop earlier, but I guess we weren't successful. So we'll try again tomorrow. I'll start off with a brief town manager's report, very much of what I have to report on will be discussed later in the meeting, so I'm not gonna belabor it or go over it too many times. So I'll just start off and say that we are working on roadwork for the town. We have culvert replacement underway, and that's going to affect several roads in town. We're also performing brush work, and we do have the striping RFP coming out. As I've noted before, we, we don't have a paving RFP out. We're going to wait and see where things fall with revenues over the next six months or so before we make a decision as to how we're gonna proceed with that. Another infrastructure-related project that we are preparing to execute is the Torsey Pond Dam and Bridge Repair, and that's in coordination with the Torsey Pond Association. We finally got confirmation from DEP that we have very minimal permitting, really none at all required because of the nature of the project. It's a repair to an existing structure affecting less than 50%. So we're able to proceed with that, and we have a final letter going out or that went out today to H.E. Callahan, who is the contractor performing that work for us. So that should be happening sometime in, in July and August, depending on, you know, water levels and things like that. But we're happy to see that one go forward, especially in collaboration with a local organization. The compactor installation of the transfer station was again delayed. We've been having a really hard time getting a firm date from Atlantic Recycling, who is our contractor. They in turn are having a really hard time getting delivery schedules from suppliers. All of this going back to the coronavirus situation that has really impacted many industries, not just the ones we see up front. So tentatively, that installation is scheduled for June 21st and 22nd, which is a Sunday, Monday, after the last situation where we had scheduled a closure to meet their schedule and then weren't able to arrive at it. I just told them that we needed to do it when the station was closed, so they are meeting our schedule at this point, and we'll be doing Sunday, Monday, which shouldn't affect the public at all. Last item, before I go to the treasurer's report, is that we are getting ready to do another iteration of the wood heat program. We have a lot of material onsite, thanks to the Kennebec Land Trust, and also to Anna Carl, who is our maintenance person. She's been volunteering with the Kennebec Land Trust to collect and bring a lot of that firewood from their green burial plot that they are developing on one of their properties. That's coming back to Reed Field and we'll be using it for our wood heat program in conjunction with the stuff that we've had brought in by residents. So we have several cord ready to be finished, cut up, split and stacked. And so everybody should look for a notice coming out about that, and we'll be getting ready for another couple of years of, of heating. I know we're gonna have a higher need this year than we've had in the past, so we're pleased to see that taking shape so early in the season.
May I ask a good report on your, on your town manager's report? Ask a question, excuse me?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
So with the Torsey Dam, will that project involve a road closure of more than what a normal day might be?
No, the only time, and we were talking about this this morning, the only time we're expecting to have a full road closure is when they'll be putting in the concrete, because they have to excavate the old concrete, do form work, put in a coffer dam. Most of the equipment can operate from the existing area that we have beside the dam there, but we just don't believe the concrete truck, having to be a special pumper truck, will be able to meet that need. So, or meet that space. So we will have to close for a very brief period of time while we set that concrete.
Not a multi-day closure then?
Not even a multi-hour closure. We're expecting it'll be, you know, half hour, half hour.
Thanks. Why don't you go on to the treasurer's report? Thank you.
All right, so check reconciliation was complete through May 31, 2020. There was no unusual activity observed. We did have some adjusting journals that were in there, but we see those from time to time to correct an error that may have come through, but nothing, nothing significant. The budget process is essentially complete now that we are done with the, the last public hearing that we had just a few weeks ago. I thought it was pretty well attended considering the circumstances, and I want to thank everybody that's been following along and everybody that participated in that process this year, because it truly has been one of the, you know, more challenging that we've had to deal with since I've been here in responding to the coronavirus, and everybody stepped up. So thanks, everybody, for that. Moving on to general comments, we should be about 93% expended with revenues or expenditure and revenues for the year. We are seeing some anomalous stuff come out as a result of the coronavirus, primarily on the revenue side. We have tried to keep expenditures in check and minimize those. So we're actually on target with, with expenditures. A lot of that stuff was already water under the bridge. So what we were able to do in April and May was, was minimal, but we have been keeping an eye on those expenditures. And as I said, revenues are down, you know, 20, 40%, depending on the category you're looking at. And we are seeing a bit of a rebound in June so far, the last two weeks. We've seen a big increase once we opened the office back up again to foot traffic in people coming in, paying their taxes, registering their vehicles. So that's been a positive indicator, but we're nowhere's near done yet, and we're definitely gonna have a pretty serious hit. A lot of that stuff will accrue in the next fiscal year after the end of the, the civil emergency, when people are then required to complete things like their vehicle registrations. We know some are going to just, you know, not deal with that, probably sell a vehicle, maybe put it in storage, things like that, if there are revenue or, or income considerations. But for the town of Reed Field, I think we're generally in a good position. We had a very good year prior to the coronavirus hitting, and most of those lost revenues will be recovered. It just won't be in this fiscal year, so we'll see a little bit of an anomaly there. Other than that, looking forward to completing the fiscal year. Teresa's already started her end-of-year work, as have I, and I think we're in a, as good a position as we could be considering the circumstances.
Thank you, Eric. Are there questions for Eric on the treasurer's report? Thank you.
Can I, you got me, Bruce?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'm looking at the motor vehicle line item for, for revenue, and it looks like we are at about, you know, let's see, oh, come on, cheaters. We're at 95% plus. When do we actually close the books? And is it possible that by the end of July, if we don't close right at June 30, that, that, that number will, will meet our forecast? And the other question is, undesigned funds and use to carry forward? We haven't tapped them at all from what I'm looking at here. Are we gonna need them, or can those numbers just be, can those assets just be rolled back for use in the coming fiscal year?
Yeah, so good questions. I'll start with the second one first. We will use those, that's just an actuarial notation there. When we'd go through and wrap up the end of the year, do the audit, those monies were budgeted, were expected to be expended, and will be as part of that whole budget process. So the use of undesigned funds, the use of carry forward. Carry forwards are a little bit different, because if we don't actually do a project, those will stay in their proper places. But the use of undesigned funds to offset taxes and all that, that's a, that's a sunk cost. That one will not change, will be used fully. So I guess that there is a portion of that number within the designated fund balances that, that may actually stay put, and that's a good thing. We always have some of that at the end of the fiscal year. Moving back to the, the first question about motor vehicles. We close out June 30th on revenues, and that, that's a firm date for us. We will just see those revenues accrue in the next year. It'll make things a little bit funky for budgeting, we'll have to do some adjustments. But June 30th is, is the cutoff for those revenues. And like I said, we've had a very good year, so we are still at 95%, actually ahead of where we would be on a month-by-month basis because of those positive months we had prior. And again, budgeting conservatively, so that if we do have a bit of a setback, we can absorb it. So we're right there. I think that we'll meet our, our revenue projections, but I don't think we're gonna have a lot rolling forward to the next fiscal year, which is what we have seen in the past, to the tune of, you know, 30, $50,000. So that's gonna be the big impact going forward.
Thank you. We'll move on to boards, committees, commissions and departments. I want to thank the Trails Committee for their minutes of February 24th, the Library Board minutes for March 4th, and the Cemetery Committee minutes for April 22nd. And I'm assuming at least that last one and probably even, well, probably not the Library Board March 4th, but they probably meant via Zoom, so we do have some committees. Well, all committees have been operating. I think that's, you know, attributed to the good volunteerism we have in town. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Joanne, you're here. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. We're going to consider, under appointments, reappointments and resignations, the appointment of Jamie Hansen as the E911 Addressing Officer.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jamie Hansen as the E911 Addressing Officer, effective June 15, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. That's effective June 15, 2020. And do we just appoint that until, or do we reappoint that every year, Eric? What is, what is the protocol on that?
That will be an annual appointment.
That will be an annual appointment, so thank you for that clarification. You have that appointment moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion?
For, for a new fight here, what exactly are the responsibilities of this officer?
Uh, well, so the, the primary responsibility is ensuring that the E911 database that first responders use is current and up to date. That residents that should be have, that should have addresses do so, that if there are errors, that they're corrected. And also adding new addresses according to the ordinance that we have in effect that dictates the formula for, say, you know, every 100 feet on the left-hand side is an odd number. And I just assigning those addresses so that we have a consistent, reliable network that, that the first responders can, can trust.
Thank you, Eric.
Bruce?
Yes.
Would you like me just to move down through them, or do you want to announce these one first?
Uh, what I'm gonna do is take Jamie's, and then I'm gonna move on to Ms. Clark, and then we're gonna do a group reappointment, and then we'll take care of the town ones as a group as well. Does that sound good? So it'll be four votes, but I think it's the appropriate way to, to go about it. So we have Jamie Hansen's E911 Addressing Officer appointment on the table. Woodson?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yeah.
Price?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
We're going as a yes. Now we'll move on to Sonia Clark. This is, she's typically been appointed as, as warden. So if I could take a motion on her, and then we'll have any discussion that might ensue.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sonia Clark, Warden of the Select, Warden of the Next Election, effective June 15, 2020, for the election on July 14.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to make that appointment of Sonia Clark for the next election, which is on June 14. Is there any discussion, July 14, excuse me? Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll call the role. Woodson?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
We're going, is it yes? And just for anybody who might be tuning in, and the public that is here, we call the role because that's the rule in holding an online meeting. Normally, we just would vote by voice, by, showing hands, excuse me. But this is what the governor's rule is. So we'll now move on to the reappointment applications. Each year, we have a number of reappointments on standing committees that we make. Some of these become vacancies, but some of them are reappointments, people who want to continue to serve. If you would like, what I will do is read down through it and then accept a motion as a slate. And when I take that motion as a slate, if you want to accept anybody, in other words, pull them out, you just tell me. Does that sound good?
Looks familiar.
Okay, so for the 50 Mile Watershed, it's Andrew Tolman. For the Age Friendly Committee, it's Mary Ann Perry and Roman Turing, who is currently the chair. The Appeals Board, it's John Bluen, Cliff Buck, Buck, excuse me, and Will Gagney Holmes. For the Budget Committee, Martin Anish. For the Conservation Committee, it's Greg Lambach, Brent West and Andrew Walsh. For the Library Board of Trustees, it's Sonia Clark, Pam Mitchell, Brenda Lake. For the Planning Board, it's Jack Comart. For the Reed Field Enterprise Committee, it's Les Priest. For the Reed Field, for the Recreation Association, it's Hannah Plarity, Plenary, excuse me, and Kevin Kelleher. For the Road Committee, it is Roland Cody and Mike Laberge, who is the chair, I believe. For the Trails Committee, it's Greg Lambach, Henry Whitmore and Paul Visset. Personally, I thank them all for wishing to continue serving on those different committees. And is there anyone you want to accept from that, in other words, pull out?
No.
No, I'll take a motion of the slate.
I move, wait, go ahead, Ralph.
I would move the slate as presented.
Okay.
Second.
And I would note, just if anybody wants to check online, in our packet is the actual dates for each of those, through dates for each of those people. And all of them are June 30, 2023. Jack Comart is 2025, because that's a longer term for that committee. And the 30 Mile Watershed is a one-year appointment each year, so that's a 2021. But you can look at those. So we have that motion. Did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none. Woodson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Bragoine. So now we'll move on to consider the reappointment of Eric Dyer to the positions of, get your hats out, Eric. We want to see each one. Town manager, road commissioner, transfer station manager, treasurer, tax collector and welfare administrator for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Typically, I've made that motion. I'm going to go ahead and present it as I just read it. Is there a second, please?
Second.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to make those appointments. Do I need to reread the positions? I don't think so. Is there any discussion? It's our pleasure to make this reappointment, Eric. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll call the roll. Catherine Woodson?
Yes.
Chris Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Yes.
Ralph Eno? And Bragoine is also yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
On the last one, you called your name, but you did not give a response on the slate for all the committee people.
I'm a yay on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, managing when you can see people face to face is slightly easier, actually. I'm trying to look at three different places here. So.
And we have nothing to do but to look at stuff because you're doing everything, so.
That's quite all right. We need to consider the resignation of Ed Bergman from the planning board. My understanding is Ed, who has served on the planning board, I think for quite some time, is moving.
Make a motion that we accept with regrets the resignation of Ed Bergman from the planning board and thank him for his years of service.
It's been moved and seconded to accept that resignation with regret. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Woodson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Eno and Bragoine is yes. Moving on to old business, we'll discuss the local coronavirus response. Eric, the floor is yours on where we're standing with things. You've opened the office.
Yeah, we have. We have, we issued a memo to staff and the public two weeks ago detailing the plan that we had moving forward for the month of June, really through early July, because it didn't make much sense to have a transition point before the holiday. And so we are moving forward with that plan very much in accordance with the governor's directives from from her team, which has been extraordinary guidance throughout this process and very much appreciated. There are certainly things, elections, for example, where we've wished we'd had a better better feedback from from the state. But as far as their their guidance for opening and reopening, we found it to be quite helpful. So we have proceeded with that. It's important to note that we did reserve the right to make changes and we've already actually made a few small adjustments as we've gone through this. The town office is open and we had set aside time where still we would have some staff members working from home. And we tried that out for the first two weeks of of June and found that we had very high demand and very high compliance staff and the public. Everybody is doing their part very well to stay safe. And so given the need and and the the high level of accountability from from everybody that's in the office, we did decide today to return to a normal working schedule for all staff. So that'll give us some more resources on the floor in the office, help with with the flow of people and information. So I think that's a great accomplishment in a in a challenging time. So I want to thank the staff for all their effort and the public too for doing their part. People have been very good about following the guidelines and we've had really no issues at all. It's been a little bit different story at the transfer station, but for some reason, just that environment, I don't know what it is, but people, people tend to get a bit more. Well, I don't know, upset, I guess. But we've handled all those situations as well. So as far as the town office and our operations go, we'll continue to follow this memo and make adjustments as necessary. I wasn't sure if there were any questions or suggestions on that before I gave just a quick summary of the the grant program that the states put out.
I would have one comment and it's sort of a rhetorical question. My assumption is, working assumption is that if an employee had some exposure at some other place regarding coronavirus, they would inform you and they are, we would make whatever adjustment necessary.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Eric, I could I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So the work schedule that's in the chart in our document, is that what you're going on? Or are you saying that everyone is working only in the office now?
That schedule had been valid through for the first two weeks of June and we made a decision today to diverge from that and actually bring everybody in full time.
Okay, and so the CEO's office hours are going to be Tuesday and Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Then with the grants.
Yeah, I guess I almost forgot the library. Don't don't tell them. The library also has reopened partially and they have a great plan that they had put in place, also included in the packet. And and they've done a very good job being incredibly deliberate in how they deal with reopening in in large part because of the population they're serving. So they've been, they've been fantastic. The governor's proposal for expenditure of some federal dollars that have come through, I think it's around thirteen million dollars, is included in the packet. This is an opportunity for towns to participate and collaborate on reopening in the safest way possible. It does give towns the opportunity to be reimbursed for expenditures in a few key areas. Education and outreach is the big one. And there's also a provision in there for reimbursement for, I won't call it enforcement. They call it business or community outreach. I can't remember exactly what the the phrase is. But essentially, it means educating businesses and responding to any complaints that might come about businesses that aren't following the the proper guidelines. So there is a bit of an enforcement provision there. But I think I think all three of those components are are important and the town of Reed Field should be pursuing in in some way, this grant opportunity as far as getting signage out, having maybe trying to get some additional staffing at the beach if we can. And certainly making the the code officer available a couple days, a couple hours a week to help respond to any questions and to help do some education for 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 businesses in town. So this was brought forward because like any grant, I do want and need the buy-in from the select board to to pursue it. And this one is a little bit different because it does include both education and enforcement provisions. So I'm very eager to hear your thoughts on what what you think is the appropriate level and and if and how we should be applying for these funds.
Grant deadline is the twenty-second of June. Is that correct?
It is, yeah. It came up fairly quickly. Definitely the last, I think, two weeks, maybe two weeks ago. So it's a short turnaround, but I I think that as a grant, it it does appear to be a pretty straightforward process. And I think that if we apply, we have a pretty good chance of getting at least some funding.
And there was, if I recall, either maybe it was MMA or maybe it's a state has a webinar on it in the next day or two.
That's MMA and I've already scheduled that. It's, I think, nine-thirty to ten-thirty or somewhere in that range tomorrow morning. I can definitely get more information then.
So you're going to watch that webinar?
Process, absolutely, yeah.
Great. So we're looking for feedback for Eric on this.
I think it's fine to apply. I would support a motion to that effect. I think that I am not in favor of Reed Field having any sort of enforcement activity in this. I would suggest that everything be on an education basis. It's been virtually impossible for anyone to enforce in their place of business, even with proper signage and it's in virtually every store. And I I just don't want to go there in our small town. But I think educating and having all the signage and promoting safety as much as we can is certainly something we should go for.
Other thoughts?
Well, there's the people will not go into businesses if they don't want to be in contact and they and people aren't wearing masks. So they're bound to lose business if they don't follow the guidelines. I mean, it doesn't have to be enforced, but it's just like part of that education. People aren't going to go into your business if people aren't adhering to the guidelines.
I would actually.
Go ahead, Dennis.
I'm sorry, I I would also add that, you know, ultimately, like like Chris said, I I at this point, I don't want to go to a place that isn't wearing a mask or taking the steps. And and that's just me. There are probably other people like me. There's probably other people that aren't like me that don't care and are still going there. So whereas I understand about the enforcement, things like that, I think that as a town that touts itself for a senior-friendly area, certainly for the sake of Reed Field and our citizens, I I think best practice right now is is what we do.
Yeah, I've only perused this kind of briefly. I'm not sure I saw anything that required hard enforcement. But I would think our our education, however, might include, even though we wouldn't be necessarily doing hard enforcement, it might well include informing somebody that, you know, we've, we've seen this activity or been concerned or this was brought to our attention. Here's the guidelines that are really appropriate. We hope you will consider that and are, we're available to talk further on it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
I I have a question for Eric. If I, I I kind of gave this a real cursory read, but I recall seeing something there about maintaining and cleaning picnic tables and those types of facilities in in public access areas. And if that, if if my memory is correct, are we capable staff-wise to be able to do that kind of thing on a regular basis?
I'd say that we are. I mean, and we certainly could do it with the current staffing levels. It would be easier to do it with some additional hours. So I I would like to apply for this and see if we can get some, you know, a couple days a week, you know, spread the time out, but to help with, excuse me, busy times at the beach, to help with making sure that the town office gets, you know, extra cleaning the library as well. I mean, because this isn't just for the next couple of weeks. This is through, I believe, the end of August. I'd have to check that, but it's a long term. So as the library opens, they're going to need, you know, more, more resources. Well, the beach, we're just getting started. So my hope is that we can apply for some some staff time to 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 perform those functions.
That would be, that would be what would consume the lion's share of the grant money, should we be fortunate enough to get some. And that's the next question is, this is a competitive grant. What do you think our chances are?
The way I read this is it's a almost a pass-through grant. I I nothing is ever guaranteed, but I'm assuming that small governments that make grant application that's reasonable, they're probably going to get funded.
Great.
I'd hope so, but again, tomorrow, I think we'll have a lot more information. But I I certainly think a two to five thousand dollars for staffing and some signage and and additional supplies would be perfectly reasonable for us. And I think probably, as Bruce said, a good chance of success.
I'm always ready to promise the state's money. Okay, great. Let's take a motion to authorize pursuit of this grant and acceptance if so given.
Oh.
Okay, that's been moved. Is there a second, please? It's been moved and seconded to ask the town manager to submit a grant application for this COVID awareness campaign and to accept funds if they so, if they do appear. Any discussion on the motion? Fine, I'll call the roll. Woodson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Eno and Bragoine is a yes. Now we'll move on to twenty-one fourteen, the fire station and library building project. And I'll let both Eric and and Ralph give us a little bit of insight as to what's happening there and answer Catherine's curiosity about the roof going on today.
Ralph, why don't you go first?
Oh, I was just hoping you were going to get back on to the meeting so you could give us an update.
Oh, I dropped out. Intermediate, intermittent connection, but yeah. The thought was when we went to that alternative trim configuration and took the old crown moldings off was that it looked a little proud and very strong compared to what the rest of that upper roof structure looked like. But now with the with the rib roof and the drip edge going on, to my mind, and all of this is still is very subjective, but I think it looks pretty clean and and it looks authentic. So I'm, I'm pretty happy with it. I don't know what Eric thinks, but I would imagine he concurs because we had a discussion a little while ago about how we would soften that approach and and it seems it's been accomplished.
Eric, do you want to add to that? And also update on any other, any other piece of the project?
Yeah, I I love that Ralph went right to the roof line. It's a fine detail and I think it's a, it's a very positive thing that that's the biggest thing that he was concerned about. It shows that the project is moving along well. And the library certainly is moving along very, very well. We couldn't have been happier with the way it all came together, how quickly, how professional and how how much coverage literally came online within the course of a day. So we were able to to get that wrapped up very, very quickly. We do need to finish off with the the metal roof line, but that's going to happen quickly as well. We expect it'll take, you know, maybe, maybe a week, maybe two. But it should happen fairly quickly. The fire station also, we've had some pretty good success with that. There are a few things here and there that need to be addressed as always with any project. But the builder's been very responsive. The architects have been on site multiple times. And it's going about as well as can be expected. We've had a few change orders, but I do believe that those are still within our budget. We do need to be careful and July fourteenth can't come soon enough to address some of those things that are coming down the pike.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Um, Eric, so now that the library roof, the chimneys look to have been done and they look really spectacular, including the metal trim on the top edges. Do we have an idea now of if we've stayed within budget so that we're going to be able to continue on with other parts of the library project?
Yes, sorry, I just, I've been having allergies and my eye started watering for, you guys don't need to see me do that. So.
Tears of pain.
Tears of pain, tears of joy, yeah, all of it. But yeah. The the additional components of this project do depend upon the budget being passed in July. Right now, we're at, we're at the end of of what we had available. Every, every stretch that we could make has been made. And so things like interior drywall work, the addition of a that stairs on the outside, even things like supplemental stuff for the fire station furniture. Those are all things that are going to have to wait until we get additional funding to just complete those, those those last few details.
And I have.
I guess what I was asking was just that now that the roof part is done, and I assume the bills have come through from S J Wood on that, and the roof is now going on. We haven't had any more cost overruns so that we're still in good position with what we've budgeted for July 14th.
Yes, and, and certainly more so for the library. There are some things on the, on the fire station that are outstanding that we're just holding off on until after we, we know what we have for available funding.
Great, thank you.
You should recognize that there was a gift from Kennebec Savings Bank.
Absolutely.
Please do that.
Yeah, so the, the fire department had applied to Kennebec Savings Bank for a, a grant. And they do give out community grants. And so we were fortunate enough to receive $3,000 from KSB. And, you know, I certainly appreciate it. I know everybody else involved with this project does as well.
Thank you so much. And thank you to Kennebec Savings Bank. I will move on to new business and the first item on new business is to consider the awarding of the road striping work. And I think, Eric, we just have one bid on that, right?
We just have one bid on that. That's absolutely right.
And it's somebody that's been doing it for some time.
Yeah, it's Lucas Striping out of Reed Field and they've won that bid, I think, every year for the past four or five years. So we did advertise this and send it out to multiple contractors, but over time they wise up and realize that they're probably, you know, not going to get the bid if, if they have a local contractor with really zero mobilization costs and an interest in helping out his community. So I think both of those things are true. And so we have one bid from a very reliable contractor. So my recommendation would be that we accept it and get this, get this worked on.
How does the bid compare to last year's?
We're up a penny on the, a penny per linear foot. So I think it went from eight to nine cents. So I mean, in aggregate, that's probably what 10%, 12% increase, but in the grand scheme, it's not, not a huge change.
I would make a motion to accept the proposal from Lucas Striping LLC as presented in our package.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded to accept that bid for Lucas Striping LLC. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Woodson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Burgoyne is a yes. I will move on to the broadband schedule. As you know, we've had two phases to the broadband project. And at this point, we're wrapping up the final phase two, which will involve public communication. So we can get some feedback from the community and exactly when that feedback will happen, that's still sort of in the planning works. My brothers on that is to make sure that that feedback is not what the kind of meeting we're seeing tonight. Or the kind of meeting that we saw with broadband. We're talking about perhaps a major expansion. Perhaps a partnership with a number of different communities, perhaps involving millions of dollars. And, you know, how we pursue that, what might be coming forth from the state and what local expertise we might have from community members. I want to make sure we get really broad input on that. So whatever the schedule is of the working group, if we have to delay in order to get really good, a good floor meeting or whatever, to make sure that we get that information, I'm more than willing to do that. As far as payments go, we paid for phase one and phase two, we're in the process of fate of paying for that. They're probably going to be about $850 higher than was originally estimated due to putting together a website and so forth, which will have some individual pull down pages for each community to get their facts and figures and so forth. And I really don't have a problem with that. So that's kind of an update on that. Are there any questions regarding where we, where we're at?
I have two.
Sure.
So I'll ask them both first, if I may, and then have the answer to each. One is what is the collective feeling from the other member towns on this project? Similar to what you were saying about public versus Zoom meetings. And the second is, um, I want us to keep moving forward with this project. I won't say at warp speed, but certainly diligently. And if we can't have in-person meetings, say for another year, I don't want to put this off for that length of time because I think this is critical to how we're operating these days, especially if this goes on for another year. So I'm not sure that I share that sentiment in the long term.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. I think the other towns are, have a sense of urgency because they have less infrastructure in place. Reed Field has a much greater cable access and therefore, you know, it's more highly available, if you will, high-speed internet. But we also are observing a select board member tonight having problems connecting in and out. So it's not as uniform as we would like across the town. Yeah, I want to make sure we get good feedback and I'm willing to, I've kind of been representing in regards to this. I'm, I'm willing to try to do that over the summer and maybe early fall. But I also have a sense of urgency to move forward on that. I will say that's somewhat tempered on one level and that is, will the federal government come forth with some possible plans for rural internet expansion because it's seen as perhaps a jobs program or an infrastructure investment that the federal government should make as part of the perhaps coronavirus recovery. If that's becomes, comes on the table and it means a huge amount of money becoming available to do a project, then I would delay for that. If there was a good shot at that kind of situation. I don't know.
Bruce, what happens if we delay and they move on? We've already paid a couple of times.
Well, what we have paid for is the report and through the communication piece. So we're not getting, and as a matter of fact, when we're done with this, we will need to have a discussion about Reed Field's continuation with this working group. It may be that Reed Field writing its own future might make the most sense. I'm always for collaboration, but if we're not all on the same, in the same place, it might not work in the way that we would like it, like it should. You know, there's also the possibility and there's just so many models out there that it may not even be a provider that we currently have. It may be meaning launching a nonprofit company in collaboration with some of the other partners, which would then accept bids for fiber and, and building our own network. That's a possibility as well. We're going to get in our report that range of possibilities and then get the reaction of the public. And that will tell us hopefully what direction to go in. From the beginning, my emphasis has been, I want to be able to develop, I want to be able to deliver telemedicine. I want to be able to deliver up and down speeds that are the same. I want to be able to deliver the kinds of communication level that allow people to work from home. Professional and non-professional people, but you know, people who are uploading and downloading large building plans to people who might be doing legal work, to having meetings like this. If nothing, and all of this preceded this virus. So if nothing else, the virus, if you will, has thrown great emphasis on where we should be in terms of looking to the future. And I think a lot of people are realizing that now.
One of the issues that's come up on the school side, the state made a wild claim that is true based on the parameters they're using, which is that every student in the state of Maine is now connected via internet for distance learning. The caveat in that was every student whose parents said they needed it is now connected, which is not the same. Students are connected, but only one student at a time can use the internet in most situations because you can't have multiple people doing online meetings on the same account without terrible interruptions in service. So you're right, the, the need is huge and schools right now are not looking at going back to school in the fall. So that's maybe a little bit of reading between the lines, but all the planning that the state has asked, which came out on June 11th, I believe, is for schools to make partial distance and full distance learning models for the fall. So new internet can't come too soon to the entire state.
And sadly, it will not be here, no matter what our decision-making is for, for the, the next year. One thing I have been very concerned about is I don't want to get into a leapfrog situation where we end up adopting an intermediate solution that costs X amount of dollars. And by the time we arrive there, it's time to upgrade again. I want to, I want to move as far, as far forward to fiber as I possibly can. And I, the other thing I would add to that is, and people may agree or disagree with me on this, is I want our project to deliver equity. In other words, I really don't care if somebody's a mile beyond down a road in Reed Field or in, or, or on Main Street. I think there should be equity in that access. If we're talking about this is something being given to citizens to allow them to do telemedicine and items of that. And, and I know there's some different models where you go down a road so far and then you go with a, some sort of signal, broadcast signal, which deteriorates over distance. So I, I really want full equity in whatever we end up at. So that's kind of an update on that whole piece there. I assume we'll be giving you at our next meeting, probably some sort of schedule, at least for the first meeting. If we can't get those meetings to give us the kind of feedback we would like, then I would propose an in-depth polling and that might cost extra money on our own. And we'll just have to consider if that's something we want to do.
I, I think it's important too for us to make sure that we let the public know. And I, I hope this is part of what the committee is doing. But when you read through it, we have towns that have zero internet other than through a telephone connection. And we have Reed Field who has the most. So the cost for other towns, the difference between doing cable and fiber is negligible. It's maybe 25% more. For Reed Field, it's pretty big because we've already invested in cable. So in looking at this as a group project, it'll be interesting to see how the pricing structure works out.
Yeah, I would state, maybe Eric, you could second, Eric's actually done, been more connected with some of these meetings than, than I have. I've unsuccessfully gone in and out of a couple of them. And I've talked on the side with, with folks in regards to it, but Eric has been diligent in attending every meeting because basically they decided to host the meetings in Reed Field and sort of like let him know that's, that's what they were doing. But I think everybody has the urgency to go to the big solution. And I, I don't think anybody's looking to just get a little bit more. I think people really have, I, I may state it more forcefully, but I think everybody's exactly where I am.
Great.
Yeah, you're spot on, Bruce. Everybody has a real strong interest in moving forward aggressively to the higher speeds, the fiber. It seems to be the, the direction everybody wants to go. And that's a core part of what they're proposing for their marketing going forward of this idea that we, again, as you noted, will need to figure out how, how we want to be involved and how fully we want to be involved.
And so what'll probably happen, and this will wrap up this discussion, I think, what'll probably happen is each town will have these meetings and there may be some towns that their constituents say, no, we don't want to go that far. And so that might create a little bit of a change at that point. And perhaps the towns that want to go full-fledged forward will form whatever group they need to, to, to form. Anyhow, I think everybody's worked well together in that group. Okay, we'll move on to considering an expansion of the license on the premises of the Weather Vane Restaurant. So Eric, I'll let you speak to this, but basically if I, if, if I'm correct, they applied to the state because under the coronavirus restrictions, some flexibility is being given to help these businesses that rely on income during this time to make some modifications on a, I guess a temporary basis is what I'm assuming. So they can have a reasonable working volume of business. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. This is in response to the coronavirus and the need to have outdoor seating. And so we do need to follow the same process to have the, the select board review and approve this expansion. I don't see any issue with it. The state's already given the approval. So my recommendation to, to, to move through this quickly is to suspend any requirement that we've had for a public hearing and go ahead and take a vote to authorize that expansion. Because the one piece that this does say is compliance or conformance with state statute. And that does call for a, a public hearing. And just as we did last time when they applied for their original license renewal, I think it would be appropriate to suspend that by a vote and then go ahead and do the, the actual vote on the, on the expansion.
Yeah, again, this is a known business that we've had a long, that's long operated in town. And so with that, I will move that we suspend the need for a public hearing and, and then move to discussion of the license. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the need for a public hearing for the Weather Vane Restaurants, extension of license on premise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the role. Woodson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Eno? And Burgoyne, Burgoyne is a yes. Thank you. So now we'll move on to the extension of license on premise. So my only question on this is the live entertainment, some of it would be outside?
Yes.
I saw that checked off.
And this is not just for the coronavirus. This is a permanent extension as marked in this application. It is a permanent outside, including live entertainment. I'm kind of thinking it's not permanent year round. But I suppose, I suppose it could be a, you know, a snowmobile gathering kind of place. It doesn't say that it's not year round. And so the, the entertainment piece is my only concern. I don't know that there are neighbors nearby. I think there are neighbors on one side on that could be effective and affected. Do we, do they have live entertainment outside on the current deck upstairs?
They have before.
Okay. And we've never had any complaints that I have heard about. So I'm fine with that as long as we haven't had complaints because they've always done a great business in Reed Field and they're very responsible.
So you're, because you see a start date on this and no end date, that's why you, you feel it's a, a permanent application?
It's marked on the application.
Where is it marked?
On the box above the start date.
And it's an unusual.
Oh, I see.
Placement of boxes.
It really is.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm reading that half backwards until I get to the middle and then I start reading it forward. That is kind of strange. Well, is there any discussion on whether we want to grant this permanently or on a trial basis?
Listen, I'm just going to say, I, I think it's, I, I'm going to mention this. I think it should be on a, a permanent basis. It's a, it's a great addition to their thing. It's giving them more space now. I can only imagine it will be helpful. And like Catherine said, it's only, you know, when the weather is nice. The other thing is we, we talked to them originally about doing this for Heritage Day since we were going to have stuff up there. So, so I think it's, I think it's a natural outcropping of being able to serve, to serve safely. And I, I think it's a positive thing.
Well, I'm ready to take a motion.
I'd move to accept, uh, this, uh, application and, uh, move forward.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to grant the extension of license on premise for, uh, North Shore Corporation Restaurant, which is DBA-ing the, uh, Weathervein. Any discussion on the motion?
Can I have just, have just one question as to exactly what permanent means? Will this come around again when the total renewal package comes up at some point in the future? Should there be any issues that we haven't been able to foresee?
Well, they'll, they'll be applying, um, they would be applying for a liquor license at that, at that point. Is that correct?
Yeah. When they renew their liquor license, they, this would be, if it's intended to be a part of that application. I mean, their letter, their cover letter did state that it was in response to coronavirus. So I, I don't know exactly what, uh, the situation is, um, but certainly to your point, Ralph, yes, uh, if there were any issues, uh, the town would have an opportunity to intervene when they did renew their license in a year.
We could be, we could then take public input into, into account for the renewal process.
Could.
I think the public input was obvious when they opened and they were packed with cars every day that whole first week. It was wonderful to see.
Okay, uh, we have the motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Let's, let's, uh, call a roll. Woodson?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
We're going as yes. Uh, we'll move on to discussing the summer select board meeting and retreat schedule and the prospect of, uh, in-person select board meetings. And so we'll just turn that around backwards. Let's talk about in-person meetings. I'm curious as to, uh, what the board thinks of that. Um, I've tried to, uh, make sure that we're safe in terms of how we're meeting, uh, we're, and July 10th, uh, would be the lifting of the civil emergency. Uh, we can continue to, um, sign warrants for 30 days beyond that in the fashion that we have. But, um, my read of, of things would be, uh, we would not be able to have this type of meeting after July 10th. If we have a meeting before July 10th, we could have an open meeting as well. There's no requirement. We would have to have, we would have to, um, use whatever spacing requirements, uh, would be appropriate and certainly just like how we opened the town hall, we would make some rules in regards to that. And those rules could go on for any period of time that's appropriate for them to go on.
Are we currently permitted to, or permitted to ha- hold our meetings in person?
Yes, we're currently permitted to do that.
I'm fine with having in-person or on Zoom.
Other?
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like, um, you know, we, it's not like there's a whole slew of people that come to these. As long as we could, you know, observe some, you know, social distancing and things like that and talk to Bill and see how wide a shot he can get. But I, I would, I would be all for that i- i- if, if people feel like it's safe. I, I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't, I'm not forcing one way or the other. I, I appreciate the way that we have all worked together in this space. Mostly I just miss being at these meetings, if you can believe that or not, uh, but, but I really, I'm, I'm open to whatever the group feels.
I want to get them everybody.
I'm open to in-person meetings again. We're just going to have to, we don't have many people show up, but in the event, we did have an issue that a lot of people came, they would have to know ahead of time that we can only accept so many and then they'll have to watch it on video.
I think
Yeah, you can establish capacity.
Sorry, I think we have an established capacity of 24, isn't that right, Eric?
Uh, that, that was the number I threw out, given, um, the spacing, uh, with a trial run or a couple of trial runs for the broadband committee meeting, actually. So I think that we could accommodate up 24 people safely in that upstairs meeting space, um, which certainly gives plenty of crowd capacity for most of the issues we, we address.
You probably each get your own table. Ralph, Ralph, did you have any thoughts on this?
I do.
Please do.
Well, I, I have no problem with in-person meetings and, uh, I think maybe some of you will sense my level of frustration with my intermittent connections here or the fact that I am a, I am not necessarily a full-time participant in these meetings. So, um, I'm willing to roll the dice in terms of my own personal health. I just don't want to put anyone else at risk should there be sentiments to the contrary. But it sounds to me as though, uh, if social distancing and, uh, cleaning issues are met, that the, the, the board feels that it's appropriate to go back to face-to-face, and I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I certainly had reservations right from the get-go in terms of, um, uh, I wanted to make sure that everybody on my board was safe. I wanted to make sure that, um, I was safe as well. I, as, as I had mentioned, I was traveling in and out of a Boston hospital, um, a couple of times and, um, I wanted to make sure that, um, I wouldn't affect anybody else. And, um, that wouldn't be the case. So at, at, at this point, let's plan on the next meeting being in person, um, and we'll set the capacity and Eric, Eric and I will, uh, work out, um, how the seating arrangement will go and, and it'll, I'm sure it'll work quite well. So with that, uh, I think we should discuss when the July meeting will be. And I would think that we, we could also talk about the retreat, although we don't really actually have to set that at this time. It's not really a requirement, um, but I thought we would talk about it a little bit.
And I assume that we'll be wearing face coverings?
Yes, I would assume that.
And the last time we set a meeting schedule, I believe, I think we'd had requests to go out six months and I'm very happy with going out farther because I think it allows the public to plan, uh, for things that they may have, that they want to participate in.
Um, I typically agree with that, but at this point, I would just prefer to set the summer schedule and then in August, try to set the whole year's schedule. Does that make sense? Catherine?
I'll live with whatever the board chooses.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to get the summer, summer set.
Like a little appetizer before the main course. I get what you're saying.
Play appetizer.
What, what's the date in July?
Well, we typically during the summer have met, um, once per month.
Right.
Okay. So I'm looking at the fiscal calendar for July, um.
So it needs to be the sixth, the 13th or the 20th.
Well, somebody has put a yellow dot on the 20th of July and the 17th of August and the 14th of September on this schedule that I, who can't see it.
It's what we have.
Did you put those dots on there, Eric? Is it suggested select board meetings?
Friendly suggestion.
Um, I, I would, I would say, why don't we just go with those three dates?
I mean, work for the financial side of things.
They do, and it fits the once per month and it allows for, um, us to have time to finish our financial reporting at the start of the month, all those things. So, uh, it, it, it checks most of the boxes and, um, if it works for you, I think that'd be great.
I humbly request to have these, uh, read again.
The 20th of July.
Yes.
The 17th of August.
Yes.
The 14th of September, and that would go with the next quarter.
Thank you.
And you're still in summer, Bruce, because the 21st of September is fall.
That's right.
Oh, I don't have a problem with going to the next month. Great. As far as the retreat goes, um, why don't we, why don't we wait until the election and then what we'll do is we'll send around, um, a, a date.
Oh, God.
Did you do it again, Ralph?
I give up. I just goddamn give up.
We can still hear you.
We can certainly hear him.
No, um, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, let's, let's, uh, let's, let's have those meetings for the 20th to 17th and the 14th of, of each of next month, July, August, September. There's no need to make a motion on that. Uh, we'll put those dates. Uh, we'll send around, uh, a particular file or, or one of those checkoff things with a few dates on them for the, uh, the select board retreat, which will occur in July or August. Okay?
And before we all go away.
Right.
Um, we're not going to have a meeting before my time of doing the warrants is up.
Yes.
Who wants to do the first quarter?
I do.
Catherine?
Catherine's the next warrant quarter.
Does that start July 1st?
July 1st.
Thank you.
Okay. And, um, do we want to just go, well, we'll wait until the next meeting to do the other three. We've got somebody and as always, I'm the backup on anybody's for the warrant. Okay?
Just want to say, Bruce, before we say, before we go, can we just remind everyone to vote? Vote, vote, vote.
Yes, and it really, all the absentee voting information is available at the town website. Also, the state has, uh, that material as well, and we really do recommend, even though it's July 14th and there'll be distancing and everything observed, uh, at the, at the, um, elementary school, the school elementary school, we would really like to see people vote absentee as much as possible. So I'll take a motion to, um, close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved to adjourn. Moved in second is to adjourn. Ms. Woodson?
Yes.
We have no audience.
Ms. Sammons?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Eno?
I think that's a yes.
We're good. We're adjourned. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.